Good evening and welcome to the April 15th Tax Day 2025, City of Victoria regularly scheduled council meeting. Ms. West, would you please call roll?
Councilman Dela Garza.
I am present.
Councilman Kidder.
Here.
Councilwoman Butler.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Lofgren.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Young.
Here. And Mr. Mayor Crocker is not here. He is representing the city up in Austin regarding House Bill 5150, so he's absent. Thank you. At this time, I welcome everybody to join me in the pledges and remain standing for a brief moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody, again. Mr. Farrell, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Do you have any announcements and/or reminders for us this evening?
Yes, sir, I have a few. So first of all, as our way of saying Happy Easter, all non-emergency city offices will be closed on Friday, April 18th, in accordance of Good Friday, and will reopen at 8:00 a.m. on Monday, April 21st. Trash, recycling, and yard waste will be picked up as scheduled. The Victoria Public Library will be closed Friday and Saturday, April 18th and 19th, and the Riverside Golf Course will have its normal hours of operation. Election Day is May 3rd. Early voting will take place next week, April 22nd through the 29th. As part of this election, the city is asking voters to consider a venue tax to help fund improvements to the Victoria Community Center. Only city residents may vote on that proposition. For more information, you can learn about it at victoriatx.gov/communitycenter. Also, the newest episode of the city's Town Talk podcast featuring Victoria ISD Superintendent Sheila Koyazo is now available on Spotify and YouTube at Victoria Texas Videos. In this episode, Superintendent Koyazo shares her goals and priorities for the district and explains how strong schools help create a strong community. Also, the City of Victoria Municipal Court is hosting a Driving with a Disability program on Tuesday, April 22nd, from 12:00 to 1:00 p.m. in the Bronte Room at the Victoria Public Library. Sergeant Rob Mallory with the Texas Department of Public Safety will be presenting information on a voluntary self-disclosure method for people with disabilities. The City of Victoria will also be hosting a car seat and booster seat inspection event on Friday, April 25th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. in the Target parking lot. I think we're still on a streak of not a single correctly-installed car seat found, right? So if somebody thinks-
Let's break that streak.
Yeah, if somebody thinks they've correctly installed their car seat, be at Target on April 25th from 1:00 to 4:00. The City of Victoria Environmental Services Department and Keep Victoria Beautiful in partnership with Texas dot invite residents to take pride in their community and engage in some friendly competition by taking part in the citywide Trash Off Cleanup on Saturday, May 3rd, from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. Groups and individuals are encouraged to register in advance at victoriatx.gov/kvb. The number of locations will be determined based on the number of registrants. And that's all I have for announcements.
Okay. This time, we'll move into item B2, Public and Employee Recognitions. We'll start off with two A, Medical Laboratory Professionals Week.
Whereas medical and treatments decisions often depend on timely and accurate test results that play a vital role in diagnosis and prevention of disease, and whereas the practice of modern medicine at the exacting standards we know enjoy would be impossible without the scientific tests performed daily in the medical laboratory, and whereas laboratory professionals are highly-trained specialists who perform and evaluate laboratory tests to detect and diagnose disease and monitor treatment, and whereas dedicated clinical laboratory science professionals maintain the highest standards and continually work to improve the quality of laboratory services, and whereas detection of emerging and reemerging pathogens demonstrates the critical role of laboratory professionals in the response to public health emergencies. Now, therefore, I, Duane Crocker, Mayor of the City of Victoria, Texas, do hereby proclaim April 20th to 26th as Medical Laboratory Professionals Week in Victoria, Texas.
I want to thank Mayor Crocker for doing this. A lot of the times, the laboratory professionals go unnoticed because we work behind the scenes, but we're forefront in, like she said, diagnosing all the diseases that, when we went through the COVID epidemic, now we're doing the measles outbreak, lab is always involved in everything that has to do with any kind of lab testing or diagnosis of diseases. So thank you all very much for recognizing us. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. On a personal standpoint, I can't do my job without you, so thank you for making my job easier. At this time, we'll move into item B2, National Community Development Week.
Whereas the City of Victoria recognizes the importance of community development in fostering vibrant, resilient communities, whereas the week of April 21st, 25, 2025 has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Association, NCD, to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program, and whereas the CDBG Program provides local governments with the resources required to meet the needs of low- to moderate-income individuals and families within their communities, and whereas CDBG funds are used by thousands of nonprofit organizations throughout the nation to address pressing neighborhood and human service needs while promoting sustainability, and whereas the CDBG Program provides annual funding and flexibility to local communities to assist in providing decent, safe, and sanitary housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunities to low- to moderate-income individuals and families, and whereas over the past 36 years, the City of Victoria has received over $27 million in CDBG funds, which have been used to fund various public service activities, public facility projects, infrastructure projects, and park improvement projects, and whereas the City of Victoria remains committed to leveraging federal resources through the CDBG Program to implement innovative activities and projects while building a more prosperous future for our residents. Now, therefore, I, Duane Crocker, Mayor of the City of Victoria, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of April 21st, 25, 2025, as National Community Development Week in Victoria, Texas.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and council members. I'm Zach Wendell. I'm the Community Development Planner for the CDBG Grant for the City of Victoria. First, I want to thank you all for our first proclamation for recognizing National Community Development Week. It's a very exciting, very big deal. And thank you for your continued support in these critical funds that help our community and increase the quality of life for Victoria. So while the city does administer this grant, we really do count on our subrecipients, which are our local nonprofits in the community, who provide these services, programs, and public facilities that the Victorians need. So just a little bit more time, I will now ask Jenny Stafford with the CEO of MidCoast Family Services to come up and tell you about a very exciting project that she just completed with the help of some CDBG funds.
Thanks. Thanks, Zach. Appreciate that.
Good evening, Ms. Stafford.
Hello. Seemed like I was just here. Whole different project, though. First of all, I want to say you have a great team at the city. You know, I interact with a lot of other executive directors across the state, and they don't all have that same wonderful relationship. So hats off to Julie and Celeste and Zach. They make it easy, as easy as you can. If you think working with the IRS is hard, you ought to work with HUD. Yeah. So I wanted to tell you just a minute or two, and then I'll get out of the way. I believe that when we built the shelter, our women's shelter back, and we started in 2008, wasn't completed until 2012, that was the first time that CDBG funds had been used in that way. Since then, doing my little hillbilly math, I believe we've gotten $1,000,000.3 to do these big projects. We did the shelter, which houses 38 people at a time and stays full overcapacity. Most nights, we have 40-some odd people there. It enabled us to add on a wing for supportive services. So we've got legal advocates, we've got sexual assault advocates, we've got child advocates there. And then the following project was our Children's Wing, which is dedicated only to shelter care, shelter daycare, and family support services. But the most recent, 2023 allocation and the 2024 allocation for what we are calling the MidCoast Resource Hub. And we called it that because that's exactly what we want it to be. We want it to be a gathering place for homeless coalition, for sexual assault response teams meetings, for other community events, but the main purpose is to serve people who don't have access to restrooms, to showers, to lockers, to a place to get out of the weather, but most importantly, a place to talk to a case manager and talk about their housing situations. Our ultimate goal is to get our unhoused friends and neighbors housed into stable housing that they can afford and be able to keep. So having said all that, I hope you all got an invitation. We're having our ribbon cutting a week from this Thursday. It will be short and sweet. The Chamber of Commerce, of course, comes with their big scissors, but another big event that's happening that day is HEB is presenting a check, even though they've already given us the check, because in addition to CDBG funds, we also receive funds from the Johnson Foundation, Lilly and M.G. Johnson Foundation, and then HEB to equip our kitchens. So please come. Love to show you around. Might even let you take a shower if you need one. But thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for all you do to support all the work throughout Victoria.
Thank you, Ms. Stafford. Ms. Stafford, thank you for your high praise, and thank you for your continued commitment and all of our community partners to Victoria and oftentimes the most vulnerable here. So again, thank you for everything. Are there any employee recognitions? Mr. Farrell?
Yes, sir, I have three for this evening. First, Ms. Irma Ruiz, I think, is in the back. If you want to stand up and let us congratulate Irma on, she's an operator at our surface water treatment plant, and she just passed her certification for a Class A water license. This is a really big deal. A Class A water license is the highest level of certification for a water system operator, typically signifying a high-level expertise and experience required to manage complex public water systems. This license requires several years of hands-on experience in water treatment and passing several really hard tests. So, great job, Irma.
Thank you, Ms. Ruiz. Congratulations.
Secondly, I'd like to congratulate Deputy City Attorney Ruby Boone, who's here with me. She was elected to the Texas Young Lawyers Association Executive Committee as a treasurer for the upcoming 2025-2026 term. That's a statewide honor, and we're very proud to have her here. And finally, we have Judge Heinold and Tiffany and Tara in the back, and then a picture of Maria and Tara receiving the fifth consecutive Municipal Traffic Safety Initiatives Award from the Texas Municipal Court's Education Center for its efforts in promoting traffic safety-related initiatives and educating the public on impaired driving. Staff was recognized during an award ceremony during the MTSI Conference in Waco on April 3rd. So that's another great achievement for our municipal court. That's all I have tonight.
Okay, that's excellent. This time, we'll move into items from council. Are there any items? I have one. Anybody? The item I have, we've been dealing with some citizens' complaints in regards to feeding of feral animals and wild animals, and the nuisance that it's caused, some of the health hazards that it's caused. This has been tried to be amended on a neighborly level without involving government. I think sometimes we can overgovern things. And so, however, this event has seemed to fallen on deaf ears. And so I've been employed, implored by some of the public to come forward and at least ask staff to take a look at what can be done to remedy this. And are there any, not reinventing the wheel, but are there any other municipalities that have dealt with this, and what are our options going forward for the health and safety of our community? So I'll task staff with that, and if there's any further questions, I can certainly go with them if you give specifics. Okay?
Yes, sir, we'll explore options.
Thank you. That'll be all. We'll close citizens' communication at this time, and we will move into, I'm sorry, we'll do, close items from council, move straight into citizens' communication. At this time, I will call forward Michael Von der Rohe. Mr. Von der Rohe, please state your name, and please remember, keep your comments to three minutes, please.
I always do.
Oh, I know you do. Excellent to see you.
I'm Mike Von der Rohe. I live at 2107 North Bend, Jordan. Congratulations on your one-day promotion to mayor. I wish you well in your endeavors.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
And I want to thank Rick Madrid and Attorney Ruby Boone for helping with the trailer park, for getting it paved and stuff, you know, because Ruby Boone and Rick Madrid combined together is smarter than the personal injury lawyer, you know, so he don't have a chance, so he's going to have to get it paved. But the Vila paving is doing it right now. I've been working on getting it done for six years, and it's been deaf ears, but he finally has to break down and put out the money. And it's hard for him, because, you know, when you own 17 trailer parks and you're a famous personal injury attorney, you don't have time to stop by Victoria and look at your property, you know, because you're just a busy man. Imagine trying to inspect 17 trailer parks, you know, and you just don't have time for that. But code enforcement, they let him know when it's wrong with it and stuff, you know, and the manager is in trailer six, but the reason I don't go to her, there's a big no trespassing sign, and her number ain't put up there, or it just says Hernandez Family. And once they do, they moved all the mailboxes in front of the sign, so you can't even see the number to the trailer park or anything, because one time I went to check the mail, and all 32 mailboxes were gone, and I was wondering, who stole the 32? And they moved them to the other side, and I didn't know what happened to them, but that's why you can't see the number. But I do appreciate it, you know, because he should have took care of this six years ago, but he didn't. So I appreciate, you know, all the time and effort that City Council put into it and code enforcement and everybody else. And it is on 2204 East North Street, and it's the street that goes like to the community center and up here. And, you know, that trailer park has been a eyesore, and Trailer 29 is dilapidated. And if you had a trailer that looked in that kind of condition, he would probably evict you. So he needs to take care of it and stuff, because he has a reputation of not taking care of things in a timely manner, but it's not his fault. He's a famous personal injury attorney, and he don't have time for the trailer park or a little person like me. Thanks, and have a good evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Von der Rohe. At this time, I'll close citizens' communication. We do not have any items with public hearings this evening. Mr. Farrell and I will continue to move the meeting along like we usually do.
That's right.
That's right. We have a reputation out here. This time, we'll move into the consent agenda.
D1, Adoption of Minutes of the Regular Meeting Held on April 1st, 2025. D2, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 21, the Unified Development Ordinance of the City of Victoria Code of Ordinances, Second and Third Reading. D3, Resolution Approving a Contract to Fund Abounds for Playground Renovation and Park Improvements at Pine Street Park in the amount and not to exceed $362,745.
Okay. That concludes the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The consent agenda passes. We'll move into items, action items with council discussion, item E1.
E1, Resolution Reappointing the Health Authority for the City of Victoria.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and council.
Good evening.
It's different watching the meeting come out here. But tonight, I don't have a presentation for this item. We're here to reappoint Dr. John McNeil as the Health Authority for the City of Victoria. Unfortunately, he was not able to make it, but David Gonzalez is here. If you all have any questions or any comments to make. If you have any questions, it is a two-year appointment, so his appointment would be through April 2027. He's actually been our Health Authority since 2015, April of 2015, so quite a while, and through a pandemic, so we're very thankful that he's hanging in there with us and continuing to do that.
Absolutely, absolutely. I hope we motion a second very quickly before he, opportunity to change his mind.
That's what I was going to say. I move we adopt this item and thank Dr. McNeil.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Item, action item E1 passes, and thank you, Dr. McNeil, for your continued commitment and support for the health of Victoria. Item E2.
E2, Resolution Approving a Professional Services Agreement with CDM Smith Incorporated for Engineering Services for the Water Supply Feasibility and Planning Study in the amount of $299,900.
I'm here to answer any questions, or we can go through the presentation again. This is the one you all heard that Friday afternoon and as well as sales tax, but it's basically to search for additional water supplies for the city.
I won't speak for everybody else, but I certainly recall it. It was an excellent presentation, but I don't need a-
Refresh.
A review. Anybody else?
I move we adopt E2.
Pardon?
I move we adopt E2.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. No discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item E2 passes. Thank you, Mr. Gill. Item E3.
E3, A Resolution Awarding the 2025 Residential Street Maintenance Project to Clark Construction of Texas Incorporated in the amount of $3,425,450.60.
Mr. Sheeblock, good to see you.
Good to see you, too. Good evening. Tonight, we're here to discuss our 2025 Residential Street Maintenance Project. This is the seventh straight year of residential street maintenance projects. Our budget for this year was $4,420,250. This year was one of the, had one of the higher, larger amounts of street that we are addressing as part of this project, total of about 8.9 miles. The various scopes of work on the streets, we're looking to either put a one-course chip seal in Onyx, two-course chip seal in Onyx, or we're going to reclaim prime, two-course chip seal and apply Onyx. That last one will particularly be in the Acres subdivision. The streets there that we're proposing to do require a little bit more maintenance than just the chip seal course on the others. We're looking to do Streets in the Boulevard Edition, which is to the west of Citizens Hospital, the Acres subdivision, which is to the south of North Street, as we were discussing earlier, Windcrest subdivision, which is in the northeast part of town, Leary Lane, running from John Stockborough all the way to Sam Houston, North Heights Edition, three of the streets in the North Heights Edition. These three streets were part of the phased reconstruction of the Streets and Utilities in the subdivision. These were done about eight years ago, and they're due for a maintenance coating so that they stay in great shape. We're also looking to do Holt Road, Hartman Road, and Sparkman Road out in the industrial area, and then Murray Street from Moody to Navarro Street. Two proposals were received, one from Clark Construction of Texas in the amount of $3,425,450.60, and the second one from C.K. Newberry in $3,602,40. With contract time of 180 calendar days, construction would start in May of this year with anticipated completion date of October. After reviewing these bids and scoring them, staff recommends that we, that council award this project to Clark Construction of Texas. Are there any questions?
No, I reiterate, I mean, this is a maintenance program that we are spending $4.4 million in doing roughly nine miles of roads. So to the public shows, I think, that we are serious about our roads, not only in keeping them drivable for our community. So thank you for everything. Any other questions?
I'd like to move we adopt this item.
Thank you. Second. Right, we have a motion and a second. Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Item E3 passes. Item E4.
E4, A Resolution Committing to Add Additional Funds to the City's Allocation of $19,524,900 from the Texas General Land Offices Community Development Block Grant, Regional Mitigation Program in the Amount of $2,63,335.29, and Authorize the Mayor and the City Manager as the City's Executive Officers and Authorize Representative in All Matters pertaining to the City's Participation in the CDBG Regional MIT Program.
Good evening, Ms. Connolly.
Good evening. I wanted to take this opportunity to refresh everyone's memory about the CDBG MIT funding. It's been quite some time- It's been quite some time since we've talked about it. And then also kind of update you where we are in the process because it has taken quite a long time to get here. Oh, I'm going the wrong way. I'm sorry. Yeah, it was faster than I meant for it to be. Okay. So back in September or summer approximately of 2023, Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission completed the method of distribution for funding that they received from the Texas General Land Office that the Texas General Land Office had received from HUD. And when, at the end of the day, the city was allocated the nineteen point five million. Then in November, 2023, the city submitted basically an application. An application for an allocation sounds kind of funny, but I'll get to why we did that in just a second. Currently, though, where we are is the GLOs reviewed our application and they had a list of questions that they needed clarification, a little bit of correction on some map coordinates and things like that. So we need to respond to their requests for information by the end of this week. And we're, I would say, ninety-eight percent on that right now. This is also some housekeeping forms, numbers have to match, things like that. The projects were selected, though, I wanted to highlight that the projects need to, number one, mitigate hazards. And these, this funding was allocated by Congress to begin with and given to HUD specifically in response to flooding in 2015, 2016, and then, of course, Hurricane Harvey in 2017. So when we talk about mitigation, we're talking about flood events specifically that we had trouble during those times. And then in addition to that, obviously, we talk a lot about CDBG funding always has to benefit low to moderate income households and in this case, also affirmatively furthering fair housing. The first project is a skater sewer and water replacement. I know, the reason why I want to talk about this a little bit is I know that it's been mentioned in some annual reports recently that we're waiting on funding. That's true. And then kind of also talk again about what it is, which is a system of hardware and software, and remotely monitor and control the city's water and wastewater systems. So that's the hazard mitigation. Right now, we can't do that. We can't completely remotely monitor and control the city's water and wastewater systems because our system is incredibly old. So the vulnerabilities we have, it's a very old system. Replacement parts unavailable, repairs are difficult. As I understand it, it's totally refurbished. There's nothing new that they can get that will repair the system that we have now. We have communication and monitoring loss. And then there's that lack of remote access for immediate response in critical conditions. But there's more that we're getting even than just fixing that. There's also, you know, the system will be secure against cyber attack, which is a big deal. We'll have overall performance and outcome processes for both the city's water systems, water and wastewater or sewer. So that's going to be a huge improvement. And we are, we are kind of waiting on to get this funding before we can start on that because what you're not allowed to do when you've applied for funding from a government funder is spend any money or obligate any money before you've gotten a contract with the funder. So we are working toward that. The Lone Tree Drainage Improvement Project, we're going to put an open channel outfall along the back of the neighborhood there that's going to go across Lone Tree Road and then drain into Lone Tree Creek. And I wanted to point out, this picture here is actually, I believe that's Tibbely Road. It floods that badly every time it rains hard. I know that because I lived there for nine and a half years. It floods exactly that badly. And it's undermining the infrastructure there all the time and puts those homes and the people's ability to get in and out in emergency or evacuation situations at risk. So it affects the homes there. There's an elementary school over there, there's a fire station over there. There gets to be standing water, which of course is a health hazard when it stays for a long time, it gets mosquitoes. It tears up the, I mean, it just degrades the road. So we'll put in the concrete line, open channel outfall, reduce flood elevations and fix the roads over there that have deteriorated because of flooding. The Influent Screen Facility Replacement, our regional wastewater treatment plant, is also a big deal. It removes large solids and debris. And we get obviously a ton of that during flood events. But the real problem is, right now, it can't be operated unless it's operated manually. And it's letting too much debris. And so when you, when it gets clogged, you have to unclog it manually. And that's a problem during a storm. So the improvements will prevent clogs, provide better pre-treatment. And again, there's a lot of efficiency that's going to be improved. Not only are we reducing the hazard, but we're improving efficiency as well with the project. So I wanted to, the resolution talks about our local commitment. It's slightly more, the total of all three projects is slightly more than what our allocation is. So we need to commit the two million dollars from our own local funds for all three of these projects. And then the main thing I wanted to tell you about was, we'll respond to all the RFIs to the GLO by the end of this week. And we'll be moving toward getting a contract with them. And my hope is that they won't have any more questions and that the next step that will come quickly will be a contract. Because once we get to the contract, we can begin our projects.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Connolly. These are some large, expensive and very important projects.
Absolutely, yeah, very important. Been kind of, been kind of waiting on them for a while. The other thing I wanted to talk about before I go, unless you have any questions, this has been a really long process for all of us. And it's not just me, obviously, working on this. I have a few people to thank. Margaret Adams at the GLO has been absolutely invaluable in addressing eighty-eight RFIs, what exactly we need to do, where exactly we find the information that we need to give them. Kelly Simmons and Eric Boning are grant contractors at our Dura. They've been the ones who've been really putting in a lot of the work. Jennifer Reyes from GIS here has been helping with the incredible detail on latitude and longitude and mapping out where exactly each location, we're talking every lift station the city has. We've had to map and then show the benefit areas for. Ken Gill, Gray Rodriguez, Curtis Davis and Gordon Williams from Public Works have given us a ton of information that's been asked for. David Shablack and Avery Flessner from engineering as well. And then our outside contracted engineers, Brian Chong and Gwex Oboda from Garver and Matt Glaze from Irvin have been really instrumental in helping us get through this project and get all the information that we need to give them so that we can get to that contract.
Well, thank you to all those people you mentioned. And thank you to you as well. We look forward to wonderful news.
Right, we do. Are there any other questions? No? Okay.
Questions? Get the computer working. All right, at this time, I'll call for a motion, E four.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Item E four passes. At this time, we'll move into F, city manager reports.
Yes, sir. So the first city manager report that you'll hear tonight is from our Parks and Recreation Director, Lisa Wuve. This is largely being given in response to Dr. Young's request for some crime stats in the Queen City area. But additionally, we wanted to highlight, staff has been working on resolving a number of the challenges in the area for several years. We wanted to make sure we highlight some of that work as well.
Yeah, thank you very much. Good evening, Ms. Wuve.
Good evening, Mayor Protim, City Council. Tonight's presentation will dive into several key topics with regards to Queen City Park and will move us through the details of those revitalization efforts. Chief Chuck Young, as well as our Chief of Police, Kristi Uger, our Assistant Director of Environmental Services, and Julie Fulgham, our Director of Development Services, and myself will be presenting. So first, I wanted to begin with the community concerns that we have heard from this particular area. And as you can see, loose dogs, litter, substance abuse and unhoused encampments. The presentation tonight will highlight our goals, the census block group, police stats, effectiveness of programs, challenges, and also a discussion at the end. Our presentation also wants to support the, wants to showcase the support we have for our local residents as well as showcasing the partnership and collaboration efforts that we're putting forward. We want to promote accessibility for all at this location as well as sustainable solutions. And Julie will walk us through the census block group.
So as you can see on the screen, there is a map of what we, what actually the group that was originally started by Mike ATN, the Queen City Collaboration Group, created this, these boundaries for Queen City. These boundaries aren't quite the entire census block that I'll be talking about, or census tract, which goes a little bit farther to the north. But for the purposes of the data that's going to be talked about, this is the boundary of what we're calling the Queen City Neighborhood. So the demographics of the block group of six oh one point one is a total of twelve hundred and forty residents. And seventy-six percent of those residents identify as Hispanic or Latina. The average age of the housing stock in this census tract is sixty-six years of age. So it is an older part of our town. And then sixty percent of that housing is owner occupied. I've highlighted on this chart the block groups. And you'll see that in 2010, the percentage of residents that were low to moderate income in that census block was fifty-seven percent. In 2020, with the 2020 census, that jumped to eighty-one percent. However, we know that, of course, during the 2020 census, there was a huge worldwide pandemic going on. And so that data has, has some issues with it and has been called into question. And as a result, Census has been publishing our American Community Survey data. And we're now required to use the American Community Survey data from 2016 to 2024, purposes of our Community Development Block Grant, that makes a tract eligible for monies to be spent in there. And so if you go off of the ACS data, the percentage of low to moderate income folks is at fifty-three percent. So code enforcement has kind of long been focused on the Queen City area since I was, immediately after Hurricane Harvey and as I was promoted, when I was promoted to Director of Development Services. So since 2017, I've instructed staff to really look at Queen City just because it had a high percentage of substandard buildings and code enforcement cases. Unfortunately, our code enforcement software doesn't really allow us to query out how many cases are by geographic area or really drill down into that data at all other than just overall numbers. But anecdotally, I can tell you that my code officers have spent a lot of time in Queen City. For demolitions, we did pull all of the demolition orders since 2017. And you can see that we've mapped them by year. And there have been a total of eighteen demolitions since 2017, which represents about eleven percent of the total demolitions out of this city during that same timeframe. So next, I'll have Wogan up chief to discuss some statistics about the park.
Evening, everybody. The.
Good chief.
As we've seen this same slide before, Queen City Park, the other statistics, these are, as you see on the top section, it's the total part two societal crimes. They're mainly the animal cruelty, the drug narcotics violation, drug equipment by, drug equipment violation, gambling, weapon laws, et cetera. And that is basically a sixty-seven percent reduction from the twenty-three to twenty-four. You have forty-three offenses, or actually forty-three drug-related offenses in twenty-three. Well, it reduced down to fourteen in 2024. The total number of fifty-one down to twenty-one. And I attribute that to our proactivity. We're not there that much to be able to handle the drug narcotics usage, the gambling and the weapon violations. Compare that to the rest of the city. We are down from twelve hundred and forty-two offenses in 2023 to nine hundred and twenty-two last year. And that has to do with the part two or the proactive offenses. Now, if we look at the total Queen City Park, you have the twenty-three version and the twenty-four version. All of the other offenses, you can see where the charges are down at the bottom. Obstruction, retaliation, terroristic threat, public attacks, resisting arrests, et cetera. A lot of those offenses that you see at the bottom are the proactive offenses. Now, look at the twenty-three. You have six and twelve other offenses. That's the bottom stuff. That's the stuff that's in the pie chart. The criminal mischief, you have three more than 2023. Simple assaults, more. In 2024, we were more proactive. So there's going to be more park curfew charges. The drug charges slacked off a little bit because we were understaffed and didn't have the ability. We had eyeballs, but we didn't have the troops that can go over there and effect any kind of an arrest. So we had that as an issue. The aggravated assaults were reduced, the burglaries were up. So, and then the DWI, that's a proactive offense. So, I mean, it's, we're all over the place as far as the proactive work. And we're all over the place when it comes to the offenses. But by and large, there was an increase, twenty-four to twenty-three.
Chief, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
That's quite a big area that Ms. Fulgham showed initially.
It is.
Is there a area where those offenses predominantly occur in within that entire neighborhood?
Yes, sir, there are. They are. They are basically the Navarro, Warren, Laurent and Red River. It's that area right around the Queen City Park itself, the park itself.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And just so I'm understanding, what you're saying that while it looks like the number of crimes may have gone down, that's not necessarily the case. It's that you haven't been able to provide as much enforcement.
That's right. Yes, ma'am. Hundred percent correct. Yes, ma'am. And also in that same area is Will Rogers Park. Twenty twenty-three, you have nineteen total and 2024, you have twenty total. So the drug charges, again, that's a proactive. The DWI is a proactive. The other ones are simply, were reactive and responsive. As you can see on the, on the chart is tampering with electronic device. It's somebody that lived in the neighborhood that cut off an ankle monitor. That's what that would be. So, next step?
Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
So here is a list of our collaboratives, both internal and external, all of which have contributed in their own ways. Here's a timeline which outlines much of what the City of Victoria has focused on over the last three years. Starting back in winter of 2021, we offered two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Christ Kitchen. At that time, it was declined. If you move into 2022 in summertime, we began the monthly stakeholder meetings. Moving on to September, there were some LED light upgrades that took place in the Queen City Census area, including both parks. So that would include the Will Rogers as well. And then you also have in January, the police focus area crime plus the M and O. You have in March, Queen City Part One Cleanup, which you'll hear about here shortly. And then you also see Part Two in October. And then to close out for 2024, going into 2025, we started programming efforts in Queen City with Fun Fridays. And in March of 2025, there was criminal trespassing and enforcement at Christ Kitchen in that adjacent lot. April 2025, there was a VPD arrest of a substance distributor. And so Kristi will share more about the effectiveness of our programs and the community survey that took place.
And to go back, the, when the city offered two hundred and fifty thousand, that was to relocate Christ Kitchen. So it just wasn't just offered, it was offered with.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the clarification.
With intention of relocating to a different place.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Okay, hello. Okay, so some of the engagement that we've done specifically in the Queen City area, and many of you have been to some of these. Yes, the goal is to clean up. You know, there's litter and debris piled at people's corners. And so we wanted to get in there and address that because that is a concern of the residents that live there. And also to educate the people in the, in the community on the services that the city has. A lot of people don't, don't, aren't really aware of that. So this first one that we did was in March of 2023, the Queen City Park. And we do block walking before these, before these events. And those are really important and effective because we can put this information in people's hands about the cleanup, about the services we'll be doing the weeks before. It's in English and Spanish. And plus, we give them general information on, on, on services related mostly to waste. At this cleanup, we had a big engagement and I think it's because it was at that park. And I think a lot of the community wanted to really see that place revitalized and energy back into the park as it used to have. This wasn't just the city, of course. You know, we also had the two local churches there. We're very excited and involved. First Presbyterian that's there, right there on Navarro, they back up into that area. And then Mount Nebo Baptist Church as well. Crane Elementary comes to these cleanups. They're also right near there. They've been very involved. The ISD came to a lot of those initial meetings. And then of course, having our police department involved and fire marshal and fire department doing smoke detector installations. They've done those at every single cleanup and people really appreciate them. The idea behind these, of course, is to, to engage the community on services and to clean it up because it makes everybody feel better. And we feel it has a contagious effect. Once we go in there, we notice you drive by a few weeks later, there's improvements. People catch on to this and hopefully know about these services. At the first cleanup, we also had engaged with animal services for the first time at one of these cleanups. And since then, we've had a very strong relationship with them. They've been wonderful. They come out when we're block walking. They come out the day of the event. It also gets them very communicating and educating the residents at the same time. The last neighborhood cleanup, I think they had three of their officers out there with us. So that's really helped as well. You can see the data, of course, we pick up quite a bit of tires, especially at this one. We picked up a ton of material. A hundred and twenty-two household serviced. We had two hundred volunteers there that day. And the police department did their bike rodeo that, that time as well. And then the next fall, we did the one at Will Rogers Park. And this one was also a big success. We didn't go, I, I can't believe we only got twenty-one tires. That's unbelievable. But we, we did pick up quite a bit of debris. Again, smoke detectors installed as well. We did the block walking. Once again, that really helps. It builds trust. You guys will know that as much as anyone. When people answer the door and you get them talking and you hand them some information, it really does help with the trust factor. We've, I feel like the more we're doing these events, we have music, we have food, we try and make it engaging. People will kind of trust the community coming out here to do these. At this cleanup, we also did, this is when we did the community survey. And we ended up getting right at about a hundred and twenty responses from residents in the area on what they would like to see with the parks in the area. And I think this is significant because we were curious, do they want to park here still at Queen City Park? What do they want to do with it? What's most important to them? What do they want to see? So you can see some of the, the data from that. What word or phrase would you like to use to describe Quinn City, Queen City Park in the future? And first thing is clean. They would just like it picked up and kept clean. And that's hard to do. They'd like to have it drug-free and feeling safe. Those are very basic things. Clean, no drugs, and we feel safe. And you can see those are the priorities first and foremost. And then when you go to what, what activities or features would you like to see there? By and far, people want a really good playground, you know, restrooms, barbecue pits, places for, for people to gather. And if you made the decision by yourself, what would you like to see happen to or in Queen City Park? Once again, they want it clean and they like it child-friendly.
Doesn't really matter what amenities you have if they're not drug-free, clean and safe.
It's right. You can have great amenities, but it doesn't feel safe. It doesn't look safe. People aren't going to engage. And we keep coming back to that same thing. What was amazing about the, the first Queen City Park cleanup is that people kept saying, this is the way it used to look when we were there that day. There were people playing games, playing basketball. There was food. And people in the neighborhood, a lot of them just came out to help. Help load up the trailer, help to pick up the bags. It was really inspiring. You know, I'd like us, you know, the more we go back, you know, we do plan to get back and do these neighborhood cleanups again there soon. And I, I want to emphasize and we all know this, it is not, it is, yes, the city is coming in and keep Victoria beautiful and but it, it is lots of community partners that get excited about these things. And that's the important piece of it. So, here we are. So we, we put out there some data, some information, some of the things that the city has done and in partnership with others to look at where we can go forward and continue with these. You know, us here, we will continue to do these. We'll look at getting back out to Queen City and the area and doing more of these cleanups in the near future. But any thoughts, discussion on this, questions, clarification?
No, the, the, actually the survey that you just showed, I think probably says it all. Clean, safe and drug-free. You know, everybody's coming out to their, to the park and being outside and being part of community. But if, once we leave, if you don't feel safe, why would you, why would you step outside? Why would you visit a park? Why, you know, why would you be a community? And until, you know, until we figure that out and help these, these residents here, I, I understand their trepidation to do that. And so I think the discussion, or at least from my standpoint, is how do we get there? I mean, I mean, we do the cleanups and that's one thing. And, and, and the police presence, that's another thing. And, and collectively, we do that. But what's holding, what's holding us up from revitalizing this area? And the neighbors having the neighborhood that, that they deserve. I think that's the, that's, I think that's the discussion that I would like to have or the, or the focus. I, I have ideas, but I'm open to any comments that anybody else may have or staff as well.
Well, you certainly see the difference between Will Rogers Park, I'm, I'm sorry, and the community. There's quite a bit more families at the other, at the other park. I think it feels that way.
And so, so I think the, the factor between the two parks in a, in a similar neighborhood would be Christ Kitchen being there. And, and I don't want to speak ill or harp on them because they do fantastic work. I appreciate everything. But is the location the right place to feed those people inside of a neighborhood? I certainly don't have a, a place inside of my neighborhood that, that feeds the many that need to be fed. And like I said, I applaud their work, but is, is that the right place inside of a neighborhood for them to be located? And I think that that's a large factor in, in moving forward and in revitalizing this. And so I, you know, that, I'd like, love to have that discussion among others. And how do we achieve, how do we achieve and what are the options in that regard?
I would too. The people of Queen City deserve better. They, they have suffered long enough because of the, the, the type of people that are hanging around there that don't even live there and what they're indulging in. And that creates an unsafe park with a lot of drugs and crime. And there's only one solution and that's to see if Christ Kitchen would relocate. The, 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 Queen City's tired. They have suffered long enough. And I guess the city in a roundabout way has just sat back and done nothing because we haven't had the statistics like we have now. This is great. Everything Chief Young has done and Christie and the, the parks. But I think it's time for action, tough action. These people deserve better.
Well, I think Dr. Young said it well when he said, what's holding us back? What do we need to do? And we don't have the answer necessarily, although the folks that just presented probably do. The price tag is one that we're not going to be real excited when we hear because it is a complicated set of problems that you can't just, you know, solve them in one way. But I, I like the challenge and I'd like to challenge our staff. What can we do? You know, price tag and all, what's, what's needed? Because I, I absolutely agree that the neighborhood has suffered and they deserve better.
Well said, Ms. Scott. Is there any other comments?
Well, I would like, I would like to know from staff in other cities, how they handle similar situations. And I understand Christ Kitchen, it would be nice if they moved. And maybe we need to offer them more money to move or give them a bigger incentive some way to move. But I would like to know what other communities do with situations like this. And I'd like to hear from staff to look into it and get back to us. I thought of this and I don't know if I suggested, but it might be good if there were cameras in the parks that could be monitored. And I don't know if that's a possibility. But I would like to know what other communities do. I think if we're, we're, we're a loss up here. We don't know what to suggest.
I wonder how many communities actually have a place that feeds people in a neighborhood? Or, or if that's on more of a thorough, fair type of place. It's, I, I would assume this is very unique in a, in a community. Pardon?
Just the U D O. Julie, you're at the mic. Is there anything in the U D O that addresses that situationally?
No, we don't really have any zoning type rules that would prohibit that kind of use. When I was a planner in Bryan, I was the downtown planner. We did a lot of work on revitalizing downtown Bryan and there was a mission that was seen as a big barrier. And again, similar situation in that they didn't have as many regulations or codes of conduct that you see at like Salvation Army or Midcoast or some of the other services out there. And the solution there was to move the mission. The city funded a huge amount of money to move them to a newly constructed road that there wasn't a lot around there. And so that's, that's how we handled it when I was a planner in Bryan.
Well, we've reached out. I was part of those discussions. Mr. Dagars, you were as, as well. Kind of behind the scenes, talking with those involved with Christ Kitchen back in twenty-one, I guess. And Mr. Loffler, they, they were not interested at that time. There was, it was
It was a point-blank rude no.
Conversation fell on deaf ears. I will say that at that time. That doesn't mean that we can't revisit that and should engage them in impossible solutions in, in regards to this because they, they do need to be, have a seat at the table to, to fix this as a good community partner.
I can't give the exact date because I don't know it, but recently Christ Kitchen has changed some of their rules. And there is a smaller population that they are servicing. And I don't know if that's made a difference, but they have cut back significantly on, on the number of meals that they serve.
Does that affect the amount of people that are hanging around in the park during the day compared to past? I don't, I don't know those stats.
I don't know that we have those stats maybe.
Or just anecdotally from, from what you've seen and been told.
In driving around through the park at different hours of the day, different hours of the evening, the park has quite a few people that are at the park. They're hanging out at the actual slab, if you will. They're, they're staying there. In reference to the other cities, of course, I came from Dallas and Dallas had most of their homeless population was downtown. They had the food banks, the food shelters, the food similar to Christ Kitchen. And that would be immediately in the downtown area. So, and it would be in the, just outside of downtown area. So here we have it in a residential area and they have it in a, in a downtown district. But the, the people that are hanging out at the park has gone down a little. But we have made some arrests over there as well. There are two off-duty officers that are now working at Christ Kitchen during the lunchtime rush. They're assigned over there in an off-duty capacity. There's two of them for safety. So is that a bit of a deterrent from the people that are coming there? I don't know. But there is more of a police presence there during the lunchtime feed.
Chief, to be clear, the off-duty officers are being paid by Christ Kitchen?
They are. They are.
Well, as, as Ms. Scott so eloquently said, I, I think challenging staff to come forward or, or come up with solutions. Let's engage Christ Kitchen as well and, and see what kind of solutions we can come up with. I, I think that the linchpin is, is certainly that entity and everything else kind of falls off from there. But not addressing that, I think we're, we're, we're not going to get anywhere, unfortunately. I don't think there's any fixing this problem without addressing that, that root of the problem. We could, we could put a whole bunch of money into the park. If we can't make it drug-free and safe and clean.
Not gonna happen.
That's correct. That's why I've been resistant to spending a lot of money on that area until we can address the root of the problem. So.
I agree.
As part of that, chief, could you put together information that shows us whether those arrests had addresses associated with that area? Or whether the addresses were from other areas or whether there was no known address?
I can, I can, I can come up with the addresses of the people that were arrested. I noticed that, I know on that last one, he was in a pickup truck. They did a traffic stop on him after the spies or the, the officers were able to observe him on a hand-to-hand transaction, I believe it was. And they were able to identify the vehicle. They stopped him outside of the area and they arrested him. Did he live in the area? I don't know, but I can do the follow-up on that. Yes, ma'am.
That would be interesting to see the statistics there.
Yep. All right. If there's nothing further, thank you so much for all the information. And we look forward to continuing this discussion in the future. Appreciate it. All right, Baton Cleanup, Mr. Farrell. City manager report regarding the Public Safety Headquarters.
Yes, sir. We're on the last one. Somehow we skipped to, I don't know why we're skipping into slide four or five of the presentation, but. Is your remote backwards? When I hit this button. All right, that's, so we'll start at slide three. All right, so I'm gonna give you a quick update of the Public Safety Headquarters project, the construction. I think it's moving along really, really well. Initially before this, you would have seen a rendering of the, of the building. But you are getting a really close picture to the rendering as it is. So as you drive by, these pictures were actually taken yesterday from a drone. Thank you to Spa Glass and their folks for, for doing that. You'll notice on the front, we have finished, they have finished nearly all of the stonework. The rest will be brick. And then what's underneath that canopy is what's called a curtain wall. So there'll be some tall glass and some graphics on the, on the windows. To the far left, let's see if this part works. So over here, you'll see the, this is the area where the court is. We'll talk about that as area A. Then they have area B here in the front where the foyer is. And area C kind of comes to the back and over to this front where the community room is. And then area D is a lot of the police crime scene, vehicle bay kind of things. The other thing, thanks to Mr. Foot, we have a hundred and twenty-foot communications tower that is about twenty feet taller than our current communications tower. So. So as I explained to my, to my son this morning when he drove by, he said, Dad, what's that huge tower? And I said, well, when you call 911, that's where the phone gets picked up is at the tower. So I think he, he's still trying to figure out how the phone rings on the tower.
He lost it.
You just want to drive because it's not.
Could we see slide three again?
Yeah.
It looks great. I drive by it multiple times a day and just in awe of the progress.
Just a little thing, but there's screening so that the air conditioners are not visible from the road. There's, you know, some screening so the air conditioners on the roof are not visible. And I appreciate that we did that for our community to make it an attractive building and.
Okay, so that's slide one. There's the rendering and there's the slide two. But you're right, the walls, you can kind of see on this, on this picture, you can see the giant air conditioner units in the back. They're actually lifted with a crane up there. And then there are screening walls that are, they don't look this, that tall from this distance. But, and this isn't saying much, but they are taller than I am. So it's, they're really handy. What you do see here is the, is the parking area. So this will be sort of public parking on the side and then you can kind of see a, I don't know if this will work on the, I guess not. You can kind of see it toward the back of the building. That's where the gated area will be for secure staff parking. And then if we go around to the next slide, we'll go around the back. So this is again secured staff parking. You'll see a site layout here in a moment that shows the concrete left to be done. But you'll see this will be secured for police and fire, staff members and dispatch and court members, court staff to be able to park in here safely. Unlike currently, in our current situation, they park wherever they can find a spot on the street in competition with whichever school is doing mass at the church and then the, and the private school down the street. So then on the next side. Okay. There we go. Thank you. So here you'll see this is the only area we're still doing any masonry work. The white stone, which is called Sisterdale, is 95% complete on this section. And the red brick is 90% complete on this section. So they're moving really quickly toward being done with the exterior of the building. So again, you'll see the layout. You see the only area not poured for concrete is the green. And so we've made good progress on concrete. The other thing that's worth knowing is the areas that have been poured, sort of the perimeter around the boundary, are designed with increased thickness for our fire trucks to be able to come in there. Additionally, one of the value engineering components of the design phase, we were trying to reduce the cost of the project was where do we put school buses? They'll be designed to handle school buses as well and so they can park back there if we, if we have tours or field trips or mock trial or those sorts of things. So from a timeline standpoint, it's hard to believe, but this project has been going on for about 29 months. It's got about six months left. So in 2022, we awarded a $2.8 million contract to FGMA or FGM Architects to do the design. They partnered with RMA, Raleigh McCoy Architects, Raleigh McCoy and Associates here in town. And then in 2023, we picked up AGCM as our owner's rep, which is possibly one of the best decisions we've made on this project and their expertise and their guidance that has helped me on a regular basis. And then another great decision was awarding the contract to Spa Glass in June of 23. We, in the same month, completed the design process with staff input, working with the architects and with, we brought, it was important to bring Spa Glass on before we completed the design so they could talk to us about building what we designed, right? Whether or not that was feasible or if there were some changes they recommended, experiences they had in other sites. In 2024, we came back to you. You established the guaranteed maximum price of about $47 million for this project. All total with soft costs added, and we'll get to that in a minute. It's about a $52 million project. And as soon as you adopted the guaranteed maximum price, we gave Spa Glass the notice to proceed and on February 6th, they began construction. Or February 6th, they got the notice proceeding and March 3rd, they began construction. Then today, they are, you know, we're under construction. We anticipate substantial completion August 6th. And the final completion is September 4th. Now, there is an asterisk on that, a big caveat in that thanks to supply chain issues and manufacturing issues, our generator is not scheduled to be delivered till September 15th. We cannot move dispatch or any of the critical infrastructure until we have emergency power at the facility. So we will begin moving maybe late September, but more likely October. And then we anticipate that being done October, November. So we intend to be fully in the building by the end, by, before the end of 2025. So, so far, do you guys have any questions on that?
No, I think that everybody, the two that they really want to know, under budget and on time.
Well, let's talk about under budget. So, and we are, we are under budget, but I'm going to tell you how much.
I didn't want to steal your thunder, but.
No, you're good. We are on time. We're moving very rapidly. Spa Glass is doing a great job. You may remember we did approve 25 extra days for them thanks to rain being higher than normal last summer. But they are doing all they can to make up those, that extra time ahead of time, right? They've rearranged the schedule. They've worked weekends. They are staying on schedule. Originally, our GMP, you approved the 47 to 16, 307. And then the soft costs including moving fees, land and site construction, you know, the installation of network system costs, alarms, material testing, all that. Added about a $4.8 million price tag to it. So we got a $52 million budget. Now, as we've been working, we've been working on savings, but also finding opportunities to put back valuable things that we took out to reduce costs. So we are looking at, if you, if you drive down Main Street and you look at where the power lines are at, located relative to the canopy that you walk under. From the street, it looks a lot closer than it does from inside the building. But it's still relatively close. So we're going to look at burying those power lines. AP has given us a price tag of $360,000 to do that. But they're not the only people on the poles. You'll notice the lower lines are optimum AT&amp;T and Sparklight. And so we'll have to pay for those to be buried as well. Now's the time to do that before there are any sidewalks, while the dirt is open, all those things, right? So we have budgeted $530,000 as an estimate for what the addition to the 360 we have from AP will be. Next council meeting, I will bring you an extension for the contract for AGCM. Remember, we extended Spa Glass, we extended TerraCon, our materials tester. That's just consistent with keeping them on board as long as Spa Glass is and for them to help coordinate the move in October, November-ish timeframe. We included as part of our soft costs, a contract with a company called Command Commissioning. And they have a subcontractor called Lurch Bates who does envelope testing or window testing. We have some facilities that have been built where we experienced significant window leaks. In one facility, our public works facility, we ended up having to redo the flooring and the windows and spending a few hundred thousand dollars to remedy that situation. We wanted to avoid that on this, on this building. Couple of weeks ago, they did envelope testing on some of the windows and they failed. They leaked. So we justified ourselves in paying for that service. But what we want to do now is potentially expand the number of windows that we'll test beyond the sample that we had to ensure that whatever installation method we were using isn't the cause of the window leak. If it were just that location, just those areas, great. But we'll expand our testing to ensure that we're not going to have leaks as we go forward. That comes with an additional $35,000 estimate on that additional testing.
Or can we get this right? I don't want future councils up here having to hopefully deal with our mess.
That's exactly right. We want a building that's going to work. And, you know, when our public safety folks are in there, we don't want them having to use their training manuals to dam up the building as they have in some other places. Now, there was an adjustment on this that I initially wrote GMP adjustment, the Guaranteed Maximum Price Adjustment. And I should be clear, this should be more, this should say Project Construction Adjustment, right? Because the GMP is part of this adjustment. But that's the biggest savings that I can highlight for you right now. That includes contingent, the, what we anticipate will be unused contingency. We have an owner's contingency of about $1.8 million on this project. Spa Glass has a contingency of about $2 million. We have buyout savings where when Spa Glass hired their subcontractors, some of them came in lower than anticipated. And as a result, we will have savings from that. We anticipate all of those savings to add up to about a million dollars. We have bid the furniture out. Next council meeting, you should expect me to bring you some sort of agreement with a furniture company to provide furniture for this building. We saved $224,000 on the furniture in this building. We initially had utilities put in at this building for, you know, construction utilities like any other project would do. Now, it's important in this case, we had the utilities put in our name, even though they were the construction company's utilities, right? The reason for that is every dollar that Spa Glass spends on this project for construction, there's a markup on our, what's called general conditions of 10.8% to us. So our electric bill, we could have put it in their name and then said, you're responsible for what you use. But then we had, we would be paying the 10.8% on the electric bill as well. So we put the temporary electricity utilities and HVAC utilities in our name. The savings from that though, we have, we have reached a point now where all of the permanent utilities are in the building. We are no longer using temporary utilities. And so we saved $200,000 over what was anticipated because Spa Glass worked fast enough to get the permanent utilities in. They were no longer using the temporary stuff. And then finally, on the bus stop and sidewalk, this is a savings, but it is not necessarily a savings we'll keep in the sense that when we plan the building, the transit service was planning new routes as well. It was anticipated the new routes would go in before the building. That's not going to happen. And so while they figure out the routes, we're going to save money on not building the bus stop at this moment, right? Same thing with the sidewalks. There were sidewalks that are planned to go in front of this building. Tech dot has said they want to just do those sidewalks anyway, so we're going to let them. And so we'll save that money. And now there may be a match down the road. And so some of the 61, 878 may be future spending. But at this moment in this project, it will be savings. All total, these are just the significant savings. There's some other costs and other, other smaller amounts of, of things that, that don't, that are much less in dollar value. But all total, from the 52 million, we will more likely spend closer to 50 million on this project. So we're saving about $2 million. Now, that is projection at this point. We've still got six months worth of work and who knows what could come. But we anticipate about a $2 million savings on this project. Also importantly, when we build things, we create opportunities for subcontractors locally to make money. In this project, 19% of the total cost of construction is going to local subcontractors. We spent over 8.7 million, nearly 8.8 million dollars in local subcontractors. In addition to that, Decker Concrete is the company that had the concrete contract for this project. Not only did they buy their concrete from Alamo Concrete here in Victoria, but then the owner has relocated himself here and is working here. The company's still based in Louisiana, but he's doing jobs here, employing people here and expanding his company here. That's an additional $3.6 million. When you add those two together, it works out to be about 26% of the total project cost going into local subcontractors, local-ish subcontractors. So, and by local, I mean, you know, Victoria and regional, right?
Excellent news.
So before I move on to some of the project management practices, do you guys have any questions about the project itself? All right. One of the things I want to talk to you about with this project, there are a number of things that have been put in place to make this project successful. Some of it by Spa Glass, some of it by AGCM, some of it by us, right? But it is, there are practices and things that have been, that have been in the works since this project began that I wanted to share with you and be able to describe to you so you know sort of how we run these projects so that you understand how we ensure project success on any kind of project like this. So the first is every two weeks, I sit with the architects, the owner's rep, the, and all the Spa Glass guys, we go sit in the, in the trailer at the job site and we talk through safety, top concerns, big wins, the number of workers on site, which initially, when the first project began, was like 15 or 20. Today, on any given day, there's about 90 people working at that site. We go through a constraint log, any kind of problems, challenges they've, they've had there. We talk about quality control issues. We look at cost issues, anything that might go up or down. And we'll talk about some of that in a minute. We do design changes. We look at a weather log, where their rain delays are, what they're, how they're planning to make up their challenges. And we go through a schedule. They have a full Gantt chart showing the critical path and, and we look at changes where they may have to work in area B instead of area D because, you know, some part didn't arrive or whatever. And then when it's all done, we walk through the job and they show me new things. They highlight anything that, that we need to see or that we didn't look at last time. So we get to go through that every two, two weeks on a regular basis. And then every off week, I meet with the owner's reps and we talk through anything that we need to be aware of. And one of the best parts about our owner's rep is they maintain a presence on the site all the time. So there's someone representing us there all the time. When it comes to cost changes, we monitor and manage costs two ways. There's a budget transfer request. So if roofing comes under budget, but we expect some additional increase in electrical or we know we need to do something later down the road, they literally do a line item budget change and then I have to sign those. And then when it comes to contingency, I mentioned that we have 1.8, they have $2 million in contingency. The, any dollar used out of that, there's a form chasing those and getting my approval before we, before anybody uses contingency. The thing I'll give Spa Glass credit for is there are a number of things that were somewhat outside of their control that they've done a good job of volunteering to use their contingency dollars instead of asking for our contingency dollars, which has enabled us to do more of the, the things I mentioned that we're adding back into the project. Design management, Spa Glass maintains constant communication with, with the architects. And when something goes wrong or something needs to change on any piece of design, they have a conversation and it all gets documented with the architects. I think they're on, I think the last count, they're on around 162 of these. And I will tell you, one of those, just one example of these was that big tall canopy outside. When the metal was going to be fastened for those, they did the research and read the, read the instruction manuals. Unlike any toy I've ever put together, they did a good job of reading the instruction manuals. They, they found that the screws they were going to use would have voided the warranty on the sealant they were going to put on the, on the thing. So they changed the screws in, in the roof, right? To one that would match, that would not void the warranty of the sealant. So that's the level of detail that's being paid on this project. And in terms of design, the architects have worked very closely with Spa Glass. They have, you saw this, the last time updated, last update I did, they have a wall built out there that you can go look at that has the materials, all the different masonry colors, brick colors, stone colors. In fact, the original stone that was called for in this project, the original white stone, when our shipment was being prepared, we learned that it was coming from the bottom of the quarry that it was going to be at. So it had a brown hue to it that looked like mud. It was always dirty. And so the architects found another stone called Sisterdale and replaced the original stone with, with this one, with the one that's on the building now, so that we got the, the white color that was always intended. So again, they're paying really close attention to detail. Materials testing, initially, when we were pouring piers, there are 188 piers under this building, holding it up. And every one of those piers had to meet 3,000 pounds per square inch for compression testing from TerraCon. This is one of those soft costs that we invested in. Several, several piers failed and when they did, they were broken apart and reconstructed and put back together until they met that, that threshold. And so whether it's, you know, the foundation, concrete, masonry, mortar and grout, or structural steel, that's all being tested by TerraCon. We have commissioning on the site, testing the HVAC, the building automation systems, lighting control, emergency power, plumbing. And as I mentioned before, we call the building envelope, the windows, the leak proof, all of that. And so those people are staying on top of it and giving us regular reports like this one that tell us what they're testing, what they're. that tell us what they're testing, what the results are, and making sure that if it fails, it gets fixed. And to the point earlier, we are under budget, and we are still anticipated to complete and fall. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments?
Wow, that's very thorough. Thank you for that.
Yeah, the level of professionalism is excellent, and I look forward to this facility serving our city for decades to come.
Absolutely.
Thanks for all your hard work.
We're excited to get folks in there.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At that time, we don't have any work sessions, correct, Mr. Farrell?
We have one quick executive session.
No, 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 no work sessions.
Oh, no work sessions, no, sir.
Correct. And so at that time, that'll conclude our public portion of the meeting. We will, I anticipate recess for approximately 10 minutes, and then we'll reconvene in executive session. Ms. West, you can take us away.
The city council will recess executive session on the 15th day of April 2025 at 6:28 PM. Subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows. Texas Government Code 551.087, Texas Government Code 551.072, Texas Government Code 551.071.